Good evening. We'd like to call our Monday, November 9th Fayetteville City Council Meeting to order. We thank you. Welcome all of you who are joining us remotely. At this time, we will move to our invocation and prayer. We will ask, any volunteers on the prayer? All right. So we'll have Councilmember Waddell, if we could please stand for the prayer, immediately following the prayer, if we could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before this city and do business, oh God. And we ask that you would be with us, that you would endow us with wisdom, with courage, with knowledge, and with humility. And Father, that as we do business, we would do business for every citizen in this city in a way that brings honor to you. We honor you, we bless you, and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. At this time, we will move to our announcements. We ask Mr. Scott Bullitt, Emergency Management Director, if he would give us an update. Mr. Bullitt, how are you, sir?
I'm well, sir. I hope everyone who can hear me is in safe and well condition. And I have some numbers for everybody, as I'm always bringing. This is our 239th day under a state of emergency for our fair city here. Two hundred and twenty-four days totaled the number that we've been under some sort of restriction. And this is day seventeen of that Phase Three first extension with four days to go before it expires. Have no real read yet, or have seen anything that would make me think about what's going to happen this Friday when it does timeout. I'm not sure what they're going to do. I guess in the global perspective, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-four of the two hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred and sixty cases statewide belong to Cumberland County. One hundred and five of the four thousand six hundred and fifteen deaths also belong to Cumberland, and we're sitting at seven point two percent positives of total tested. We want to be below five. That's the goal. And as we compare to the state, it's six point six percent at this hour. The good news of the day is two hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and nineteen have been presumed to be recovered, and that was reported, as it always is, on Monday. So we're thankful for that. Since I last talked with this group, probably the biggest thing that has come out from the state public health side is they've issued a little bit of guidance about holiday gatherings in terms of Thanksgiving, and what Black Friday shopping may bring. In short, what they're asking people to do is to remember the social distancing that you've heard me talk about so many times, but they're also trying to encourage people, if they don't have to go shop in person, do the online thing, touchless sorts of things. There are several pages of the Thanksgiving guidance, and nothing is novel, and nothing's going to shock you, or your constituents' council. It's just simply gathering in such a manner, if the weather permits that day, outside. And in North Carolina, that could be sunny, eighty in shorts, or it could be eighteen degrees. So we know there's a chance there, one way or the other, that could affect that. But they're asking to do as many things, remote, virtual, and Zoom-related, as you possibly can. And also kind of keeping things in the context of household. If your household's a group you normally eat with, and on that day, eat among that group, even if you're in a larger gathering setting. So it reminds me of, maybe not such the distant past in the old days, but how you had these smaller tables, especially where the children ate. Well, we're going to have to take the big table and divide it up, and keep people distanced, and wear masks, and do some things that are not really Thanksgiving-related, but that's the right thing to do, and that's what we'll have to do. Pending any question you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bullitt. Don't see any. I guess, thank you, as always, for your thorough information and briefing of the council, and appreciate your sacrifice. I know it's been a long two-hundred-plus days.
We'll keep going. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, we have a very special presentation tonight. You know, there's so much you can say about this gentleman, but I will read what I have. I'll share some personal experience. But, you know, I'm kind of joyous, but also, you know, have mixed emotions, because I think Fayetteville and Fort Bragg, our community, will definitely miss this gentleman. Mr. Justin Mitchell arrived here at Fort Bragg in June of 2014, after serving as the Deputy to the Garrison Commander at Fort Rucker, Alabama, from August of 2009 to June 2014. Mr. Mitchell attended and graduated from the United States Army War College, served as a Deputy Garrison to the Garrison Commander in Swinefort, Germany, from 2002 to 2008, Director of Community Activities, 282nd Base Support Battalion in Germany, Assistant Director of Community Activities at the 409th Base Support Battalion in Willsack, Germany, Family Support Division, Chief and Army Community Service Officer at Camp Zama, Japan. Prior to joining the federal service in 1993, he worked for five years in Arizona as a child abuse investigator. Mr. Mitchell's awards include the following: Superior Civilian Service Award, two Commander's Awards for civilian service, two Leadership Awards while attending Army Management Staff College. He was selected as Vice President and Civilian Leader at Army War College. Mr. Mitchell has several hundred hours as a professional speaker, educator, trainer, experience, as well as television and radio appearances. So, Mr. Mitchell, I will defer, ask you to meet me at the podium. I probably read a lot more than that than I should, but Mayor Proton, take it from there.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, from one Army wife to another Army wife, I would like for us to acknowledge Ms. Michelle Mitchell, which, if you've seen, if you're listening to what the mayor said, I know that she followed him through his career path, and being an Army wife, and going to all those stations. You know, Europe's a great gig, being an Army wife. It is a great gig, I will not say. But there is a lot of work, and we appreciate you, too, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us here in Fayetteville. But I've got two fun facts about her that I've learned in the past five minutes. The first fun fact is she had two children in Japan, which I told her I was a complete wimp, that I had to come back to the United States. I came home with one in my belly and had to come home to have mine. So you are a true blue Army wife, and we thank you for your service. And the other thing is, her name is Michelle Mitchell. And the only difference between her first name and her last name is the letter E and the letter T, which is a really fun fact, pretty cool fact to have. So again, I just wanted to acknowledge you, and thank you for everything you've done for us, too. On behalf of the mayor and the City Council of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our key to the city and coin are proudly presented to Mr. Justin O. Mitchell, in grateful recognition of his devoted interest and untiring commitment to Fort Bragg and the citizens of Fayetteville while serving as Deputy to the Garrison Commander 2014 to 2020. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I gotta say that, first, I am extremely humbled, and thank you so much for this honor. It's truly an honor. One of the things Mayor Covin and I have spoken many times about, you can't think of Fort Bragg without thinking of Fayetteville, and you can't think of Fayetteville without thinking of Fort Bragg. We are inextricably intertwined. And we have such a huge and proud legacy, but more important than that, we have such a great shared future. And I know that, we've talked about, the days are long sometimes, and the nights are long sometimes, but the years fly by. And this season, too, will pass. And so I will pray for this city council to continue to the best for Fayetteville, and that in turn means the best for our armies and our families. So thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.
And you all, when Mr. Mitchell says he will pray, he literally means it. Every time I've met him, he said, "You don't mind if I say a quick word of prayer, do you, brother?" And so we appreciate that, sir, and wish you all the best. All right. So, Counsel, we will... Oh, okay, okay. All right. Counsel, with that, we will ask for a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
So be it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Wright, and there's a second by Councilmember Hare, for approval of the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Adam Clark, that is unanimous by those who are present. I think Councilmember Davis will be joining us by phone here shortly. Oh, oh, he's, he just sent a... He's on Zoom. Okay. So, Councilman Davis, if you can hear us, what's your pleasure on this vote?
Agree, Mr. Mayor, agree.
All right. Thank you, sir. So that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. And Counsel, as you know, as we stated, let's utilize our lighting system, so I can make sure I recognize and properly contribute the motions. Councilman Hare? All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Hare, there's a second by Councilmember Dawkins, to approve consent. Any discussion on the motion? Is that a question, Councilmember Kinston, or you voted? Oh, you're quick on the trigger tonight. All right. So, Counsel, let's catch up with Councilmember Kinston, and I'll look to you for your votes on this. Councilman Davis?
Agree, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Adam Clark, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right. Item 7.0, Staff Reports. We have our very own Chief Hawkins, here to give us a third-quarter review. Sorry about leaving my trash up there.
No, no, no. Actually, it caught me off guard, because it's getting so fast. I was like, are we up yet?
All right, Chief, how are you?
I'm well. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. Once again, appreciate this opportunity to present third-quarter review to the council. I say that in sincerity, because the more you know, the more you're able to help us, help educate the community. And you all this year have been very, very much educated on a lot of things that the Police Department does, and we just keep learning more and more. I also want to take this moment to share, appreciate my command staff who are here, because there's no way that this machine can be operating as we do without everything that they do, as well as supporting the officers and employees of the Police Department. So, set up the format. This is pretty much the same thing as we typically always do, in regards to how I'm going to share this information. So go over some crime statistics, the numbers, as well as share trends within, meaning percentage-wise. Also, talk about strategies. We've had a lot of different questions about what do we do and how we do it, and then share the community engagement in the same format. So with this, remember, we talk about our crimes against persons, the first thing we're going to look at, comparing previous year to this year, where we are year-to-date, from January through September. We see that we've had increase, a couple of increased homicides from previous year, our rapes comparatively are up, aggravated assaults, and as well as all other persons' crimes. And just as a reminder, we've been, previously, I share this in the beginning, going against three consecutive years of decreasing crimes. So at some point, we're going to have to realize, we never reach zero. It'll never be a zero, or ours will be some incidents. So we're going against our own numbers. As we've broken those down, aggravated assault is our major crimes against person category. We break that into misdemeanor and felony, just to see. We've had a lot of shooting in occupied dwellings. We had a lot of shooting into vehicles, a lot of people being shot as well. So that's showing that percentage increase. We also look into domestic violence. We have a domestic violence unit that drilled us down into cases, because those also become repeat cases, or repeat scenarios and instances. I'm going to take a moment during this category, though, to talk about, remember, we had this first inclination, believing that domestic violence is going to go up because of COVID, or anything associated with families. This is to note, we do have an increase in misdemeanor, whether it be a threat, and domestic violence versus a true assault from felony. But we also want to highlight this category and mention, we talk about children, we talk about missing, missing youth, and we may think that is going up, but actually comparatively, it is not. We look at our numbers from 2019, from the same time period. In 2019, we had three hundred and two runaways. I mean, 2019, we had three hundred and nine runaways. In 2020, we've had three hundred and two. So, you know, they're still happening. It's still incidents that is occurring, but it hasn't increased more than the previous years. I share this aspect of, although we had just twenty-one deaths year-to-date compared to nineteen, our homicide unit still goes out and investigates all deaths. That's the unit to make sure, is it eliminate the opportunity, is it suspicious incident? So we investigate everything. We've seen also that our overdoses are high, and so is our natural deaths, or accidental deaths, when they actually go out and investigate, up by ninety-nine. Now we go to crimes against persons, to burglaries, high, larcenies, those are thefts, like from vehicles, or whether larceny is being categorized, breaking into, you missing something off your porch, or then in motor vehicle theft, we've seen a trend of that being increased also. Robberies are down comparatively. All other property crimes in this category, for our total property crimes, is up by a little bit under one percent overall for that number. Clearance rate, remember, this is the category, so while you look at this number, in the middle is where we are year-to-date. That number is fluid, because it might take more than a month time period to actually do the investigation to close out a case. We typically, at the end of the year, keep it fluid, and you will see those numbers start increasing. Those show the efforts of when a detective, or even an officer, does an investigation of closing it out with an arrest, or closing it out with other criteria arrests. We stand typically above national average. So this is the category. It's going to go, it looks a little wordy, but I'm going to talk it through. We've had discussions talking about violent crimes and gun crimes, and why it's increased. And people have asked, "Well, what are your strategies to deal with that?" Just to share this information, I kind of wish I could share strategy, because unfortunately, in operations and our tactics, it's very difficult to show, because we have to be very fluid. One thing that I can share is how we operate our organizational structure for our investigative unit. We have specialized units that focus truly on, like our gang unit, or aggravated assault unit working together with our robbery unit. We have our violent criminal apprehension team, and we have task force officers assigned to federal entities that help us talk and communicate. We also have a forensic unit. These are professionally-trained individuals that scientifically collect data and analyze it, so that we can have a solid foundation for evidence-based prosecution. You know, we just can't go out and collect people and say, "We know you did it. We're going to take you into jail." That's kidnapping. We have to have the evidence, either dual warrant, so that the prosecution side can bring them to justice. So we have to be very meticulous about what we collect and how we collect. Another strategy we have is, we have the actual ANIMAS unit, which is a National Integrated Ballistic Information Network in our department. Everybody doesn't have that. That gives us the tools to start connecting the evidence of casings or projectiles, and tying the tools of evidence from one incident to another, so we build the case up for prosecution. We have specifically, for our investigative within patrol, a community engagement response team. These are assert teams that are directly connected to the district captain, so they don't have to wait. If they see trends happening, they themselves can work in those areas and build up cases. We also have a crime information center, that's one of our strategies, and it's a fusion center for our region, meaning that we have dedicated crime analysts that focus on things like robbery, focus things on burglary, that are specialized to support the entire department, as well as support the region for information sharing. A lot of other cities or jurisdictions don't have this access to be truly looking at information and analyzing it, and supplying us with the data to analyze it, and build up information for cases. We utilize technology. Our technology, example of a technology would be our camera system. How we place our camera systems, and monitor them, and collect the data for that. We also have other software and technology systems that we use to stay on top of modern investigations, and other tools to assist the department in solving those crimes. We have an electronic monitoring unit. That is a unit that combines GPS traffic tracking for repeat offenders or prolific offenders, when they're released on bond, to make sure, once they go back at home and wait, if we see a crime, we can go there and really look in, see if they were in the area where incidents occurred. Communication is another one. Communications internally and externally within the department. We have comstat, which is compare statistics, where we have all of the, not just crimes that happen, incidents, this is a lot. We talk about it on a weekly basis internally, because we realize, when we set ourselves up in a silo, one unit may be diligently working on a case, but not be familiar how that case might be associated. So we come together every week to talk about the cases, to talk about the trends, to see where we are on the map, and how we deal with that. The other thing that, it's a kind of a double-edged sword, is we communicate externally. We have a public information officer that we share this with the community, so they are aware. Just because we are sharing it, and being trend, no, better yet, if a community is not sharing it, it doesn't mean the crime's not happening. It means that the public does not know about it, because we are definitely connected to the media, we are definitely connected in our social media. We have the number-one social media Facebook page that's followed. That means people are going to be aware. They're watching what we're sharing, but that also means that the community can be aware, and if they see it, they can share that information with us, which is the next thing, which is our Crime Stoppers program that we're connected with, where we incentivize people with reward money for submitting information to help us solve crimes. We've had a lot of success with that. Community engagement and outreach and education. Educating kids on gun violence. This is our EKG program, that we've gone into all of Cumberland County Middle Schools, as well as private entities that ask us to come in, and where we talk to youth on the dangers of gun violence, decision-making, and the consequences when you associate yourself with criminal behavior, just being around. We also have Operation Ceasefire Movie Night, where we are out there engaged with other partners from the community to say, "What else, what other services are provided?" And this, also, we give out free gun locks, and is an opportunity for the community to get to know the police officers, as well as have something to do as a community throughout their area. Traffic fatalities. I know we've had a lot of crashes, just off of something else that we push out. But comparatively from last year, we've had one extra crash from last year that involved in a fatality. These are just fatalities, not the accidents that involve the serious injuries to a person. This is just the narcotics numbers, for narcotic seizure of drugs. We monitor this as well, so we can see what type of trends of drugs are being sold. We've seen, like last year, we had a high increase in fentanyl seizures. So these are our numbers compared to last year, what we're doing. Last year, it showed we had not, just, and this is just a narcotics unit, this is not the entire Police Department. They, at this time period, last year, had fourteen guns that they had taken off, that they had seized, where this year, so far, we had thirty-seven. This is our communications, nine-one-one response. You know, we set a goal or target for having responses, calls, seven minutes and twenty seconds. In this time period, we've seen we've increased to eight minutes and twenty-eight seconds. We are evaluating that. We know that we cautiously go and typically send two officers to a call, especially on higher priority calls, like shooting occupied dwellings. So that may delay our increase in time period of respond. Share internal affairs. We review our use of force reviews compared from last year. We've had lower incidences that we've had to review. Departmental investigations, we have a little bit lower for internal, that we self-initiate. And then we have a little bit lower where citizens have complained on officers. We have our staffing numbers, our sworn and non-sworn comparison. We have, this is our second class that we graduated in July. We have been diligent on making sure we're reevaluating how we're taking in new hires, what we're reevaluating. We've been with discussion with the city manager, on looking up different strategies as well for recruiting, and focusing a lot more on laterals. So, this is what I want to share. I want to share a different unit that we haven't talked about, our social records unit. And the reason why I want to share it, is because they are a major component for our department in assisting the Police Department in officers not having to go as many calls for service to go and take the report personally, directed with a person. This also helps the community for decreasing COVID exposure. You can see, we've had over, close to about six thousand, maybe fifty-five hundred more reports taken by our call center. You see where it started increasing right around the June time period, and you ask, "What type of reports do they take?" They take everything from a larceny from motor vehicles, shoplifting, all larceny cars. Now, mind you, we do ask them, "Would you mind taking it on the phone", as opposed to dispatching officer, and if they insist, we'll dispatch an officer. But this minimizes the time for that an officer has to be out on a call, taking these type of reports for citizens. It doesn't minimize the investigation happened. It's still investigation will occur if need be, but this also assists the officer in responding to calls for a police report, when a police report is needed. Our community engagement during COVID, since this last, this third quarter, what we've done, we had our third faith forum, and this faith forum, the people wanted to hear about community engagement, pretty much the same things you've all wanted to listen to. They wanted to hear about how we are, how our trends are in regards to the historical, what we've done historically as a police department, how our oversight is done, how we've done transition from driving while black, how we've transitioned from being someone coming and doing an audit on the Police Department. So we share that information, they ask many questions. We set it up during Zoom, and people were actually here during that session. There was a lot of give-and-take questions asked during that session. Another thing, we started in September, was our second Citizens Police Academy class got started, and we had fifteen participants. And then we were also able to host a motorcycle safety class for the community in September. Nothing I want to share, we work hard to look for... We, we work hard to look for not just ideas to be able to partner, ideas to be able to address things. But we applied for a Saki grant and, and we were awarded it. This is kind of big. It was a million dollar Saki grant. And let me tell you what that's gonna provide. That's gonna provide a focus on co-case squad, co-case unit specifically related to sex crimes. It's gonna enable the district attorney to hire a assistant DA solely dedicated to sex crimes and anything related to that. So that's an addition for two, two years, two, yes, two years. The other thing it provides is rape crisis center. It provided resources for the rape crisis center to hire an advocate. It also gives us another investigative assistant. This also is gonna enable not just us, but regional departments in our area. If they cannot afford to send kits, rape kits away, we can support them and help them send those to, to be analyzed and assessed. So that's definitely a big initiative that we were very excited when we received that grant. We also got a COPS grant for officer wellness. We, we applied for this as the whole Blue program, as an overall officer wellness to evaluate mental health for our profession. And it's gonna, it's a big program, so we were really excited about that. We were spotlighted, highlighted in the National Police Activity League program for their annual report, our police department about specifically talking about the efforts that we do within our community. And of course, we always highlighting, reevaluating our mission core and values. So without that, I am ready to answer questions.
Thank you, Chief, you do have a few. And I have a question that I'll, I'll ask as well. Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief. I was, social media was active Saturday about folks gathering downtown and, and you had, I think, the right amount of people down there. And I appreciate you doing that. I appreciate you, whoever is doing this at the department, following social media and keeping up with any chatter in the community. So thank you. I, I, my guidance is continue to be vigilant. The presidential election is not over yet. And I think there's gonna be lawsuits and there's going to be, there'll probably be some folks that'll want to take any reason they can to commit crimes. And, but I, I heard good news that some perpetrators were, I think pled guilty, I believe, that set our Fayetteville Market House on fire, so that, that was positive. What can we do about overdoses? And think about that, in the 60s, when Councilman Wright, Councilman Hare and I were growing up, we used to have to dive under the desk. We had these atomic bomb scares and we had to dive under the desk at Westlong, but never forgot that. So I know we, Wuhan's not done yet, although Pfizer announced a vaccine today. But do you plan to get back into schools to try to talk about the dangers of overdose? Is that something that we can, that the county will allow us to do?
So getting back into the schools about talking about overdose, one, restricting on getting back to the schools. But trying to figure out a way of, of course, sharing information about overdose, we open to that. We are also connected to the LEAD program, which is partner in with the diversion program. That's why we have NAYLoX in, that's why we have with every officer so that we can prevent an overdose from happening in a depth. We're there when we first respond. But we look for a lot of different opportunities to how can we share this information on overdose. Unfortunately, you know, even today, we had children overdosing, just today, on two different calls. It's, it's kind of sad, but they, they, you know, I'm not saying that they die, but the accessibility to drugs is, is very serious. So we definitely look for other avenues that are just not, we can't just try to lock someone else, who was, lock someone up who was selling it. But we also look at the evolution of starting to possibly charge the seller for an overdose death, using that evidence base as a prevention and issue. So we've talked about that.
Thank you. Two more quick questions. Do we do exit interviews? I, I can't, okay, so you, you were doing exit interviews because I noticed our numbers are down. So why are we continuing to lose officers?
So it's a, it's a, we do, I do personal exit interviews and the city also has an exit interview process as well. It's a lot of different things. It's, 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 people are changing careers. People are moving. People are just deciding, I don't want to do this. A lot of people are retiring. It's increasing, it's, it's not an anomaly for Fayetteville. This is across the nation, it's been across the nation for over a couple of years now as far as the, the difficulty in recruiting and the difficulty in people staying in this field. This is no longer a 30 plus year, 20 plus year career. A lot of times people are transitioning and doing something else. Like I said, I know I've been in discussions with the city manager's office and we've got some ideas that we're kicking around.
Well, we sit beside the largest, most important military installation in the world and I, and, and they're turning out now something like, I don't know, is it 400 and some soldiers a month now are leaving. So, and they, especially if they're MPs, we want them, so.
Absolutely. We've, I've had, I met someone today from, from the new command and I'll let them know. But we're in constant communication with them, looking for, yes. But with that, we do also hire a lot of people who are in the military. When their family leaves or moves to another location, they move with them, so.
All right. And last question, cameras. Are, are you adding to your camera budget? I mean, you thinking about 20, 21, 22, I hope. And are we getting, I mean, that's the key. Cameras are the key to our future, our future security.
So cameras help us out a great deal, especially individual owners' cameras. We utilize them all the time. And council did approve and designation, the increase in camera system. So that should be coming up, and we're moving forward for that for our city as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, before I go to Councilmember Hare. I wanted to ask you something, and I know you may not have specifics, but out of the homicides and serious assaults, what would you say, just in general, not this year, not details, how, how much of that you think is related, drug related?
So going off the earlier, before the past, I would say before the past, let's talk about the aggravated assaults outside of homicide. Homicide is usually associated. More recently, homicides has increased, if they have, is not really, most of the ag assault is gonna be drug, gang related. Retaliation, homicide is gonna be associate, association. So, and, and in reality, ag assaults, homicides would be hi- higher if we didn't have great doctors, if you think about that.
Or bad shooters, huh?
So, so that's why we, we investigate the aggravated assaults as seriously as a homicide because we understand, just like in our last, what we shared in the, in the public, the, the shooting that happened, that we're still looking for these individuals, that, that's just a step away from either hitting the right spot on how serious it is. And they will be prosecuted or be charged as attempted homicide, attempted murder, so.
Well, the reason I ask that, I see that our seizures are down, but our, those numbers in those particular areas are up. And I was trying to see was there a connection between that? So the amount of drugs we got off the street were less for 2020 compared to 2019.
Yeah.
But also those other things are up.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we don't decrease. So keep in mind, even though drugs are down, our focus, we do focus on gang association or, or, or the method of what they're doing. So drugs may be down, but we also have other things, other type of criminal activity that we're focusing on in those investigations to make sure we pull people off, off the street. Right now, we, if you think, when we, when we share our narcotics, that's just the numbers for our narcotics unit, not for the whole, the police department. Our narcotics unit does in-depth investigations, expands it, it's not street quarter. Drug investigations that we're seizing, it is after we see a big case or serve a warrant, like we served a warrant last week, we take those off the street. But that does stem, that doesn't say it stops from the drug sales from happening. They just have to find a new seller or a new avenue to purchase it. So can't, I don't know if I totally answered your question, but.
You got there. I guess my, my point was that there are some factors to this and, and I know you have different units for different things. So I guess from what I understood you to say, this is just narcotics is information. So if gang unit made an arrest on a gang and they seize drugs, it's not included in this.
That is correct, that is correct.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief, thank you for the, I guess you call it the SACCA.
Saki, yes.
The sex crime grant. I remember years and years ago, this being a public hearing night, we used to have a young lady that came up before us every public hearing and just beg for support for sexual crimes against women and things along that line. So to see that, even though I know we've been doing something and we've grown in those years, 10, you know, 10, 12 years ago, and to see the additional, what goes along with that grant, I mean, that, that's a big thumbs up. Two questions. Whenever our police department goes out and we're dealing, we're in this COVID time, how would they dress? I mean, you know, how, how do they deal with that one-on-one encounter with folk?
Yeah, it's very difficult, you know. There's a mandate to have the mask on, is a mandate to, but if, if there's an encounter that fight happens, it's very difficult for them to focus on that mask. So there are times that they will get exposed. And as well, at, at times that, you know, they're gonna encounter someone that abruptly comes, approaches them and they don't have time to put their mask on. They are supplied with not just masks, they're supplied with hand sanitizers and methods for cleaning themselves and making sure, one, they know if they're feeling a certain, feeling ill in any kind of way, they don't come to work or let us know. And then, of course, the city has the, the COVID time period for being able to get tested. Unfortunately, you know, we, we have to go get tested when we get exposed or we know someone's exposed to us. But it's, it's a very difficult balance of how you do, how you serve and how you stay, keep yourself protected and, and then continue to go on, so.
And I knew it was, I, even when I got the call from one of my constituents, I knew, kind of knew what the answer would be, but I wanted to hear it from you and we was thankful that tonight was the night of your report. As I looked through all of your listings, I have, I haven't seen suspicious calls as one of those items unless I've missed it.
No, you don't see that.
Now, the only reason that I'm bringing that up, that is one of the number one things that our crime prevention pushes or reiterates over and over at our Community Watch meetings.
Yes.
So my thing was this, I know that our citizens are engaged, that's why we have these numbers here.
Yes.
But I just, just thought, now, not, not trying to give anything extra, but it would be good to see just how the engagement is for our 911 suspicious calls.
Okay, that's easy.
That would be something I would like to see occasionally.
We'll highlight the 911 center.
Because that's just as important.
Absolutely.
I'm always telling people to do that.
It is.
Keep the police in the community.
And it keeps us busy. And, and it, and it is something that we look at weekly. We look at weekly what type of calls we got, how is it increased, is it average? And what, what are the suspicious calls that are going out? They're very, very helpful. I'll highlight the 911 center next time so you can see more of what they do and what type of calls they have to decipher. But that is part of the numbers of our evaluation that we do, absolutely.
And, and see, we get what you know, but just for the public. You know, we get the 911 service calls on our data for each community. But what would be good to, as an overall? All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Kinsler?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had one question regarding social media. There was a concern with citizens and I wanted to make sure that we just publicly asked the question on how is it decided with social media on Facebook, when a story is updated versus a new thread being put out on information that, of something that's occurred?
So when we put out information on social media, it is public, it's notifying an update, a missing person, a robbery, a suspect, it's, it's to make the community aware. And it's all based off of evidence from the detective. And then if we find any update, which is that eliminates, this didn't happen, this was not accurate or any change to that, the detective is responsible for updating the PIO to make sure the public understands and know, these facts and data are not accurate, now you know it. So that's how, and we send it out, not just in a social media, we send it out as a press release. The, the, so it's different avenues. We send it internally for our city employees as, as a press release, which goes out to the media as a press release, but also goes out to our social media. So the media may decide not to update it once they tell the story. But we are consistently, will update ours because that's how we're being responsible. Media picks and choose what they want to share. We will consistently share the same information that we receive from victims or from people who claim to be a victim or whatever the case may be.
But it will be the original post, if it was, if it's social media, Facebook, it would go to the original post that was done.
It should go to the original post as a tracking, so yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wright.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation there. Just have a few questions. And I know at one time, your percentage, in the way you count your percentage of felonies, if a gun is fired into a resident?
Yes.
And if it's six people in there?
Six.
That's six felonies.
Yes, sir.
So in essence, one situation may cause the percentage to be much higher than the actual events themselves that are taking place.
That is correct.
You still do it that way?
That is, that is still correct, and that is not my choice. That is the standard that's established for the national incident-based reporting system. So it is how we are governed by the rules and laws, how to submit the data to be evaluated.
Sure. The next question is I have on robberies.
Yes.
It looked like you had 62.9% versus the national average of 30, 30.4.
The clearance, you're talking about the clearance investigation portion of it? Yes, I believe so. Because when you're saying comparing it to the, that one.
You're right.
Yes.
So when you say the clearance comparisons, what, explain that to us.
Absolutely.
And then I have a question to come back to say, what is the most frequent type of robberies here in Fayetteville? After you get with that.
Drilling down on what the fre, that question is gonna be difficult and I would have to get that data. But this is, this is inclusive of business robberies, person robberies, or anything that's classified as a robbery per NIVIS, per the standard. So as you look at the, the columns, the, the whole year average, national average is what the average, every police department that submits their data to NIVIS is. That is for robbery, meaning that they have clearance. A clearance rate means they get an arrest. 30% of the time, somebody submits a police report for a robbery. We in 2019 had a 72% clearance rate, which meant that we were able to solve that case 72% of the time. Where we are right now, what I've tried to explain is, these numbers will increase as the year closes out because we continue to investigate it. And once we investigate and find, solve the case or solve the crime or eliminate that it was not a crime, that's how those case, those percentages increase. So with that number in the middle is fluid.
Got you. All right, good job. The next question I have is your CERTS, your community response team.
Empowerment Response Team, yes.
You know, lately, in, 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 in our communities around the country, I would say, sometime you have incidents of individuals that are mentally ill, they're acting out of sort of whatever. How do we handle mentally ill cases when the opportunities present, present themselves? And is our, are our police force trained to deal with that or are we doing something different?
No, our, and that CERT team is not that. Our police officers are trained to, to understand, be educated on the bigger picture of understanding different types of mental health crisis, mental health issues, or whether it be an excited delirium situation. So they're trained in that. They're also trained, fully trained in CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Team Training. In fact, our next faith forum, that's what they request to understand that. So at the faith forum, we're gonna talk with that about that. So our officers are trained on assessing big picture, but they're also trained on being safe. So they use different strategies. They may call someone else, they may talk about de-escalation. They evaluate the entire situation once they arrive. And ultimately, understanding what's the, what's the crisis, who's involved, there's any weapons. Every, every situation is different. Or you may show up and have no idea it is a, a mental health situation. So they're definitely trained on assessing the whole situation, what the activities, what, how someone's responding. I know this is a, a national concern. We understand it in conversations we've had of, how can we get engaged? I know that my, my professional experience, because we try, we do our best. But I really believe that it is going to take. but I really believe that it is going to take two entities first to get together. It's gonna be the, um, people who have mental health or families of people who have mental health really truly need to get together with, um, the healthcare profession. Have that discussion first and say, what is it that we want an outcome to be when we, when we result in a crisis of self or family? And how do we want to be treated? That way, we can bring it to the table to law enforcement to say, this is our expectation. Because you may get a healthcare provider that says, I'm not equipped to respond to a situation like this. And I feel safer if this is the format. I think it would make it a lot easier because we've been ready to serve. We've trained, we've had to get, uh, um, training on what the different types of mental health issues, um, but we are not the professionals. So, um, we're open to any recommendations that will keep everybody safe, absolutely.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Mayor, uh, my question is on complaints on officers. When you get a complaint on an officer, uh, how are, are these cases handled right now?
Um, when we get a complaint, we, we receive complaints any format. Um, it can be anonymous, it can come through email, it can come through a text. We've taken, uh, we have, uh, we've taken complaints literally, um, from Facebook and, and start, uh, when we have enough information, um, we just can't, um, just randomly, um, just say, this is the complaint. We, we really would like someone to be the witness and say what the claim is. So we take them one externally in all different formats, but we also have, when you look at the different columns, the internal. When it, when a supervisor reviews a situation and sees something that, that, uh, for example, if we are looking at a use of force and we see, um, not everyone may have operated according to policy. Do we need to do some more training? Do we need to do some more evaluation? And that might become an internal complaint, uh, investigation and that. So we, we have different levels of complaint, but we take in all complaints to be investigated. Doesn't mean that there is a positive stake that saying the officer did anything wrong, but that's the purpose of the investigation to look at all the facts and look at all the evidence that we have for it.
Thank you, uh, ma'am. Uh, just wanted to say that I, I know that the police officers' jobs are very, very difficult. Sometimes one-second decisions have to be made. So I, I just want to, uh, commend your, you and your department, uh, for the job that you guys are doing and keeping our city safe.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Chief. First and foremost, on behalf of Savoy Heights and Haymont Hill residents, they are very thankful for the, um, presence that has been there with the very rapidly occurring shootings that have been avo- um, occurring in the community. Um, they have somewhat seen a, a change, however, it's still happening, but they are thankful for the presence that you've placed there. Um, first, I wa- wanted to ask, when we, when we're talking about, we, we get them off the street, right?
Um. Get what off the street?
We get people off the street that are creating these crimes, right? And, um, you know, I, now depending on the crime, I'm all about second chances. So when I start to thinking about community service and engaging, um, engaging citizens into community service in the community, I was wondering, do we have something set up to where, uh, for court issues, community service, do we offer our citizens academies to, as a part of community service?
Um, we have not reached out to, that, that is not part of community service. Our Citizens Police Academy would not, in my opinion, qualify as community service.
Okay.
Um, but anyone can sign up for our Citizens Police Academy.
So in my mind, I think it would be beneficial to have something like that, um, so that they, whoever, you know, people are creating crimes, they can engage with everyday citizens who probably have jobs to go to or, or are not necessarily out here creating, creating, uh, crimes, um, so that they can kinda be amongst people and kinda be empowered to kinda do a little bit better with being engaged into our community and knowing what we do here in the city. Not just, just, just the city of Fayetteville, but the city, uh, citizens academies as well. Um, secondly, the Open Data Portal, can you briefly talk about that in terms of, because a lot of citizens don't know it exists. Um, talk about how often is it updated? Um, what they can see on the Open Data Portal and how accessible it is to the citizens? And then I have one more after this.
Yes, so, um, part of our transparency is we have an Open Data Portal. What, you can go to the city's website and click in on it and you're able to submit your area, street, um, and it gives you the range of what you're looking for. It gives you the street corridors, it's, uh, it can map it out for you. We actually also, um, if you have a phone call, make us, give us a call, we'll help train you how to get onto it, but you can look in your area, you can look, um, um, to see the incidents that are occurring and, and everything's in there. It is updated, I believe, um, every three days. Help me out, y'all. How, how? Kinda instantly.
Okay.
Instantly meaning, once the police report is, is CAD though.
So essentially, if I wanted to say, you know what, crime is going up right now, let me see how many, uh, traffic stops are going on, uh, by means of how many black people are getting pulled over or how many white people are getting pulled over. If, if I, if I wanted to really pull all that, I could go to the Open Data Portal and pull it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so finally, it came up earlier, um, about, um, the charges being made for the market house, um, that being set on fire. And I just wanted to get an update on, um, I know the Black Lives Matter mural was vandalized and I know that we had some video footage and I just wanted to get an update on if anybody was apprehended due to that.
No, ma'am. We still investigating that. We're still looking for leads.
Still, okay, still investigating. Thank you.
Okay, I'm next. So, um, Chief, thank you for all your hard work and all the officers and your staff out there. We appreciate everything that you're doing. I have, um, one question. I kind of know the answer, but I think that the public kind of needs to know. So with the time of COVID, we know that, you know, eleven o'clock, um, places of entertainment and restaurants and things are supposed to be closed. Have we seen, um, that not happening more of a nightclub atmosphere, more than the restaurant atmosphere? Or people having parties or things like that go on?
You know what? You caught me off guard on that one. And, and I'm always gonna honest.
And, and I apologize for that.
I'm always gonna answer you honestly. I think that, um, if we look at the time period when calls are coming in, that's call, we're still responding to regular nine-one-one calls during that time period. So we're still actively involved in the citizens requesting law enforcement support for other things, unless it's an incident where you're saying.
Okay, so, so let me just go to the chat there. So I guess my que- it has come to my attention and, you know, and sometimes, um, as councilmembers, we get calls and, you know, and if you do not call nine-one-one so the police can get there. So this is my thing. If you see something, call nine-one-one, say something so the police officers can go out there and it's not councilmember blank, blank, you know, from district so-and-so saying, well, I heard. So that was my first thing that I would like to say.
Look at that because that might minimize any type of incidents happening after that time period. That might help us out, so.
So, so, so yes, that, that was my question. So if, if a police officer goes by a storefront and the whole parking lot is full and everything around it is full, um, would they automatically stop or would they wait for someone to call nine-one-one? What would be the protocol?
It, it all depends. It all depends. So, but what, what you have provided was, it's a helpful, first of all, because we also uh, can partner with A L E.
Right.
And it helps us out when those incidents happen. So another thing that we'll look at and check out, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Councilmember Waddell, has she spoken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Chief Hawkins, of course, first of all, thank you for everything that you and all of your officers, both sworn and non-sworn, do to keep our city safe. In relation to the Officer Wellness Cops Office, Officer, Office Grant, it, it makes me want to ask the question, how's the morale of our police department right now? There's been so much
Yeah.
hardship and negativity focused towards police officers?
Yes.
And I just wonder how our police department is responding to that? How is morale for the force?
So I've shared this before, morale is low. Mor- and, and it's some, it's a hard time. I've been doing this thirty-two years, right? This is a, this is definitely unprecedented times and it's, uh, it's low for a lot of different reasons. But at the same time, although it's low, you know, we're, we're resilient. Um, we still are motivated, we still come out, we still are excited when we help people, we still are doing our jobs. But, you know, it's a daily commitment to say, shake it off, keep going. So I can't be more honest to you to say, it's low, it's hard, it's hard out there.
So what are some suggestions that could be given to this policy body and to the community to help ensure that we are doing our part to help bolster that morale as we push for our officers to continue to do good work?
So first, let me share this one. I, I know that you all support the police department. I also know that, um, for, by merely things like you approving our, uh, step increase, right? And you approving us getting an additional psychological aid for that. Um, but, but really, when you all just say thank you and you all really acknowledge it to the public and you see an officer or you see a member of the police department, your voice means a lot. Your voice means a lot when you say, whether or not you acknowledge, the fact that you're learning, you've been learning about what we do means a lot. When you share that to others and share how professional we are, share the standards we have, to share that, um, we are transparent for a reason, we're building our legitimacy, we've been doing it. And, uh, and comparatively, we're not perfect. But when you share that information as the leaders of our, of the city, uh, um, it, it means a lot. So that's something I think that would help.
Thank you. And lastly, I would like to say that, um, as you hear the council moving forward, particularly with the internal committee, and I say this for the benefit of any of the officers who may be listening, as we're moving ahead with dialogue about what does it mean to have a CRB? What is this, what does it look like? I want to specifically say, as a council member, my support of that research ha- has nothing to do with non-support of our police department. I think that our police department does excellent work and I want to make sure that we are partnering with our community to ensure that they have the same confidence that I have in our police department. And so I want to be very clear in saying that because I know sometimes when we're having this dialogue, it might feel like an attack or like, um, like we're trying to uncover something that we think may be hidden. And really what I'd like to uncover, that I think is, is the most hidden thing, is what great work is being done by our police department. And I love that you always say, and I echo this also, we're not perfect. Nobody is, but we do good work. So, um, again, thank you and thank you for permitting me to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Chief, I think you have answered all of our questions. I think, uh, Mr. Manager, they need to receive the report. All right, so, uh, I have a motion, I mean, uh, Councilwoman Ingram?
Mayor Colvin, I'd like to make a motion to receive, uh, the third, third quarter?
Yes.
Third quarter police report from Chief Hawkins.
All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, there's a second by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, uh, to receive the report. Clear the screen, council, any, uh, discussion on the motion? I'll look to you for your votes. Chief, uh, one minute for you. Skedaddle if you can. Uh, Councilman Davis, are you still on?
I'm on, sir.
All right, what's your pleasure on receiving the report?
Read.
All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Chief, can you convey a message to all the members of your Fayetteville P D, uh, city council, mayor, city council? Uh, appreciate you guys for the work you do, appreciate you, uh, keeping our community safe and enduring, um, the things during this difficult conversation. A lot of things are said about the police, but, uh, thank God, uh, that's not specific to our police department and you are appreciated. So I know we don't tell you that much, but thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm sorry. The item seven point zero two, diversity, equity and inclusion task force, internal, external updates. Um, so, uh, Dr. Whitfield, before you get started, I just kinda wanted to give a background to uh, the listening audience about these. These are two, uh, after the incidents of, uh, of George Floyd and some of the other things that we've experienced here in twenty twenty, um, city council has established an internal and external, uh, committee to review, uh, the city's activities, policy, to make sure, uh, and to, to make sure that we ensure diversity, equity and inclusion in, in our city policies. And with that work, uh, we have, um, two, uh, chairs or co-chairs, uh, and then the Mayor Protem and I serve as the other co-chairs for the two committees. And I will, uh, briefly, before Dr. Whitfield gets started, give the two co-chairs an opportunity to maybe introduce their committee members uh, to have just brief remarks and then we'll go into it. And so from the in, uh, external committee, I'll go to Councilmember Larry Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, uh, for appointing me as a, uh, to serve as the chair of the external committee, which is very important to our residents. Over the past three months, I have had the opportunity to serve alongside our fellow committee members, uh, Mayor Colvin, Mayor Protem Jensen, Councilmember Dawkins, Councilmember Ingram and Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. To seek options to address diversity, equality and inclusion issued or these issues in the city of Fayetteville, I'd like to thank each of you for the time you have put in trying to develop and recommendations that will help the city of Fayetteville and our residents move forward to make our community a more equitable and inclusive community. The committee met six times since August. We discussed police and commu- uh, community relations. Uh, we discussed the market house and some race relations conversations. The external committee has two recommendations. Allow staff to pursue a contract with E T C Institute located in Ulthar, uh, Kansas to conduct a survey to serve as a baseline for, um, for community, community discussions related to race relations and the future of the market house. The external committee would also like to recommend the Human Relations Commission to take, um, I'm sorry, the Human Relations Committee to be tasked with facilitating series of virtual town halls hosted via Zoom, given our current COVID, uh, environment, to discuss the results of this surveys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman, uh, Coach Davis, would you like to have a few words about internal committee before we go to Dr. Whitfield and Miss, and Angel Wright Lanier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, uh, city and everyone listening tonight, um, I'd also like to thank, um, the mayor first for appointing, um, these committees and giving us an opportunity to share, um, the workload in serving our citizens. In August, the committees were created and Mayor Colvin, Mayor Protem Jensen, Councilwoman, um, Kinsten, Councilwoman Waddell, myself and Councilman DJ Hair, uh, were a part of the internal committee team. Um, the Assistant City Manager, Dr. Telly Whitfield, was been our P O C, uh, S M E and has been a great assistance to work, helping us work. Um, of course, Mayor Colvin, he established it in order to address diversity, equity, inclusion uh, within the city to do an internal look at how our systems work in those three areas and look at ways that we can improve, uh, upon our service, not simply to our citizens, but as employees. From that, we have three recommended actions. Um, these three proposed interim recommendations to the full council, um, include initiating mandatory inherent and unconscious bias training for the city. It, uh, then goes to reviewing and evaluating our peer jurisdictions on their efforts to increase local and minority visit participation as well as continuing our dialogue regarding the city's interest in establishing a police citizens, uh, police, uh, citizens board of some type to be determined by the council and the citizens. I think it's very important work. Again, I thank everyone for serving and I think that, um, our staff that's been giving help us has done a great job for Mr. Clip, uh, to the two proposed, uh, to the two consulting groups that are working with us. And the information that I believe is gonna be briefed tonight by the city staff, um, is going to be very informative and I look forward to our continued work and providing these solutions to the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Thank you, uh, gentlemen. Uh, Dr. Whitfield, you got some mighty fancy socks, but, uh, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Appreciate it, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, hello? Tonight, Assistant City Manager Wright Lanier and I are here to just provide a little bit of a brief report out on the work to date, and I'm gonna emphasize to date, um, regarding the two council committees. And we already had the bottom line up front, um, as the two chairs just mentioned the recommendations. So I'm gonna provide a little bit of context. Angel's also gonna come behind me, provide a little bit of context as well as talk a little bit about, um, some of the themes of the discussions, um, over the last, uh, three months. I think it was mentioned, and, and I appreciate Councilmember Waddell's statement, I think it was mentioned that every day, staff does the work. I think it was mentioned that every day, staff does the work. We get the work done. However, it is important for us to do an internal assessment, not only of the workplace culture that we have, but also the workforce dynamics that we have. So in this environment in which we live, um when we're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's really important for us to take a little snapshot of where we are now. So a lot of the work we did in the internal committee, um which I had the opportunity to be the staff support for, was do that just right there. Take a snapshot of where we are, provide as much information as possible regarding our workforce demographics um to talk about our policies and procedures. We are a very professional organization. That being said, as um our esteemed Chief of Police just said, we can do better. We're not perfect. Um so we continue to want to emphasize those points. There were really two questions that I think of when we talk about the work that we do. Do we have any institutional or structural biases to opportunities for everyone to succeed within our organization? Number one. Secondly, are our practices and policies having some inequitable impact on the communities that we serve? Those are two powerful questions. And over the last three months, we've had a lot of um tremendous dialogue amongst council and with staff. Given that, the scope of work that we had for the internal committee really had three places. One, to look at our current workforce demographics, including the trends that we have, as well as our human resource policies. It was also a spec- uh specific interest in our public safety policies, and to make sure that we are mitigating any um assumed unfair treatment. Secondly, we wanted to look at our government proced- procurement efforts to provide small, local businesses an equal opportunity to grow and be successful by participating in all aspects of city contracting uh for construction projects, professional services, and purchases of goods. As you well know, um over the last several years, we have an LSBE program, and the the council has set an aspirational goal of forty percent of our total spend to be local and small um small businesses. Our third component was specifically focused on the police department. Their policies related to recruitment, citizen in- in- interaction, and the departmental standards. So we had six meetings over the last uh three months, and we provided a lot of information, a lot of information, a lot of information um to the council. A lot of information. We have a a big binder of information that we provided to council. But the bottom line up front, where I think the council really would like to go, is to really look at and focus on how we, as a body, both internally and externally, can focus on using a DEI, diversity, inclu- equity, and inclusion um lens in our decision-making, as well as the development and delivery of our future policies, programs, and services. So what I wanted to focus on, just briefly, and then turned it over to Angel, were a couple of the issues that we talked about um over the last uh three months and and some of the preliminary um conversations or potential initiatives that the city government can take on to make sure that we are an attractive and inclusive place to work, as well as we're making sure that we have a strong impact on the communities that we serve. Number one is to become an employer of choice. We've had this dialogue over the last um several months, as we started out with the strategic plan um for this fiscal year twenty-one, of what does that mean that we can actually retain and attract it talent um all of all um backgrounds that can come here and work in? And I I love what um Councilmember Davis talks about all the time, the most diverse community in the United States. So what does that mean? There are several pillars of what that means. We're not even talking about everything that's going to be around funding. It's not necessarily about compensation, but it's about the environment in which we work. Number two, um we talked about how specifically we can do a better job in recruiting, and that was one of the questions that came um to the chief earlier. How can we do a better job of making sure that we can recruit recruit and maintain strong standards that we have around our public safety? Thirdly, um and this was actually something that it did come out as a strong recommendation from the internal committee, was to look at um inherent or unconscious bias training, not just for um staff, but also for the city council as well, and how you can really think about that in decisions that we make on a daily basis. We also looked at what's the next steps with our LSBE program? How can we do some research with some of our peer public organizations um to make sure that we're being as inclusive as possible around our minority business participation in the procurement process? With that being said, the council has already invested in this direction um with our disparity study. Um as one of our targets for action in the FY twenty-one budget, the council um set aside money for us to have a disparity study. The disparity study is a precursor for us to look at what um deeper policy remedies we may have um to focus in on um our or and increase our local small business enterprise program. Some of the things that's actually going to happen in that is we will have um a contractor, a consultant, who will come in and do an assessment of our current RFP process. We also want to do a con- conduct a market analysis to make sure we actually know what the population is out there. One of the conversations I was having with staff today is, if we think we know that there are three hundred of X type of businesses in the community, we don't know what we don't know. There may be four hundred, five hundred, and we haven't had the opportunity to reach out um to those actual business owners as well. And then obviously, the biggest piece of the disparity study is to evaluate our city purchases, uh Mr. Hair, going back several years to look at our purchases over the years um to make sure that we are doing the best we can um in this in in the in the spirit of that program. Finally, as was mentioned, the council has asked staff to provide research on peer municipalities and their adoptions of citizen oversight of police or police boards. Um so that is the the kind of the final stage where we are in in our groups' meetings. Um we've kind of gone through our workforce demographics phase. We also went through our pre- procurement phase. Our next phase is really to focus in on the uh citizen oversight committee and what are the legalities and where um the city of Fayetteville would like to take um the organization. So with that, um I'll turn it back over to to the chair to make sure if he has any parting remarks before I can turn it over to my colleague.
Then I do have a a question by Councilmember Kinston. Uh maybe we'll catch that question, go to the chair if there's anything.
Mr. Mayor, council, um I don't have any other. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Mayor, council, I don't have any other uh comments other than, again, I I really do appreciate the support the staff has given us and um the different staff members who consistently step in to simply not simply bring us information um but to help us um prepare um as we serve our citizens. So I really appreciate that, and thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and uh thank you, Dr. Whitfield, for um a fabulous job that you've done over the last uh six sessions. One of the things that I do want to point out and make sure that it does reflect in the summary and to get a history of where the initial bias training came from. Uh there was a council member request that I submitted for our work session on August the fifth that was then moved over into the internal group for discussion. On the history portion, I would like for record for that to show that that was originally done as a council member request.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, uh thank you, sir. I guess we'll go to um Ms. Wright Lanier, Assistant City Manager. Wright Lanier?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, or good evening at this point. Okay, so um the external committee, we've already had a a little brief overview, but it was established by Mayor Colvin to identify areas of focus that would improve opportunities for all of our citizens regardless of their status in the community. The committee began meeting in August, and it has held regularly scheduled meetings, six meetings as we already know, and our last meeting was on November the fourth. So some of the topics or the topics that were covered were police and community relations, the market house, and general race relations. We had the opportunity during this time to see and talk to or have several experts present to us. Our first expert was recommended by Mayor Colvin, and his name was Dr. Patrick Oliver. He's the Director of Criminal Justice Program at Cedarville, Ohio, Cedarville University in Ohio. He gave us a presentation on the recruitment, selection, and retention of law enforcement of uh officers. We also had our own resident expert that you heard from earlier tonight, Police Chief Gina Hawkins. She presented on several topics. I'm just going to give you a highlight of some of the the topics that she covered. But Fayetteville's hiring processes were covered in our community as well. The traffic unit versus patrol officers. She talked about traffic stops and the reasons. She talked about accidents with fatalities and road uh vitality locations. We also heard from, we had the opportunity to hear from, a world-renowned expert during a special meeting on community policing. That expert was Dr. Robert Friedman, and he's the founding director of Georgia's International Law Enforcement Exchange and a professor at the Andrew Young School of Pub- of Po- Policy Studies at Georgia State University. He gave us a very thorough presentation on history, on the history and the merits of community policing. All of these meetings that I'm talking about have been held via Zoom uh since we're in a COVID situation. So staff has been very involved and provided a lot of information and research, as Dr. Whitfield said. I want to take this opportunity also to recognize Dr. Anthony Wade. He's the Human Relations Director. He'll come up shortly to address any questions with me that you all might have. But we researched the options and challenges related to hosting community and community town halls via Zoom. Because of the issues that we're addressing, we think that we're going to have a lot of people, maybe upwards of five hundred. So if we get beyond five hundred, that would be quite the challenge. But staff also reached out to other communities, the larger communities like Durham and Winston-Salem, as well as smaller communities, to uh determine who could provide us with a community, who could conduct a community survey. And finally, staff provided options for the facilitations of the town hall meetings. And I'll go back through the recommendations. So the external committee has two recommendations. We um the external committees wanted us to allow, wants to allow staff to pursue a contract with ETC Institute, which is located in Olyth, Kansas, to conduct a survey to serve as a baseline for community discussions related to race relations and the future of the market house. The external committee would also like to recommend that the Human Relations Commission be tasked with facilitating a series of town hall uh of town halls hosted via Zoom, given our current COVID environment, to discuss the results of the survey. As I said, I recognize Dr. Wade, but I also would like to thank him uh for his work on this effort as well. And I will now turn it back over to the chair to see if he has any additional remarks.
Thank you, um Angel Wright Lanier, for the great work you've done along with Dr. Anthony Wade of Human Relations. Uh cannot stress enough uh the professionalism and the hard work uh that you guys would go back and and bring back to the committee. Um it's just invaluable, so I just want to thank you and your staff, uh Dr. Wade, for a job well done.
Most certainly, sir. Dr. Wade, do you have anything this year?
All right, uh do we have a question, Councilman Dawkins?
Yes, sir.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and I I appreciate uh Chairman Wright and his uh hard work um and Dr. Wade and Assistant uh City Manager Wright Lanier. This is um, it's going to be um very, I think, um how do I word this? Tense, emotional, passionate, there's lots of um adjectives and probably some adverbs in there I need to at least mention. But I would hope, and I wanted to get one of you's commitment, and maybe Dr. Wade uh being professionally trained in human relations and leading our commission, um if we could get some kind of commitment. I get a call every business day. I got uh I think three this afternoon, between three and five o'clock. You know, Councilman Dawkins, when are we going to have these community meetings? And I said, well, we can't because of that darn China flu. So we got to get through that. Um but I would like a commitment that we're going to do these things in person at some point in the future, if it's three or six months down the road. Um I and I'm fine with the survey. Um let me first ask that question, and I got one more, and that'll be it.
Yes, sir. We will, we are right now planning, we were planning to have them via Zoom, but we can have options should, you know, we get past COVID. And we certainly can also have um some in-person uh meetings, but they probably have to be very small following COVID guidelines.
Well, hopefully, we'll be out of this um in the next three to six months. Um because I think you're going to have thousands of people. And I will say this, I know it's shocking, uh because I'm almost the oldest on the council. Uh but a lot of folks that call me are older than I am, and they don't know anything about Zoom. I mean, they've heard of it, and and a couple of them said we bought the stock, and I think it went down a hundred and twenty-three dollars today, I think. But um the point I'm trying to make is um we need to be listening to everybody. We need to go into the white churches and the black churches and the Hispanic churches and the Korean churches and the Vietnamese churches and and we need to go into every community that we can to get get to get their viewpoint, because the Fayetteville Market House is a historic structure uh that's one of five left in the world. And um all right, my next question um concerned the um uh the plan um with the geo-fencing. Is that going to be part of the social media? I'm assuming this Olath, um is it O-L-A-T-H-E, Olatha? Olatha, I lived in Kansas nineteen seventy-eight. Uh Olatha, Kansas, is it going to have a um a social media piece for geo-fencing? Because I'm familiar with that business, and and you can actually geo-fence a house on a street. So I mean, we can actually geo-fence the borders of our city.
Yes, sir. So we want to, we'll be able, they should be able to do that, as they have done in other communities. And that way, we can have so many, you know, from so many uh district, from each district. So we're going to talk further with them, though, because what I did initially, what we did, was just call Winston-Salem. So we have to talk to them about the specifics of what we need. But that has been done. I've seen it done before.
Thank you. I'm a big believer in R and D. Um let's rob and duplicate what these other cities have done. And uh so thank you, Assistant City Manager Wright Lanier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't know that's what R and D stood for. Uh Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. I have three thank yous, and then I think that's it. First, I want to thank um Councilwoman Ingram for bringing, I cannot remember his name, but um.
Dr. Friedman?
Yes.
Yes.
I have referred so many people back to Dr. Friedman and his comments about what community policing looks like. Phenomenal presentation, and I I just, I even keep going back watching it just to remind myself what the work is that we need to be engaging in in that aspect, so thank you for that.
Councilmember?
Um second thank you, thank you to the internal committee for helping us to meet the deadline, and by us, I mean um Councilwoman Kinston, Councilwoman Ingram, and myself for meeting the six-month deadline that we established when we met with the individuals from the Ville's Voices, and we can came before council and presented our request to keep moving the dialogue forward concerning a citizen review board um to be able to see what that looks like. So thank you to the internal committee and to the council for supporting us in that. And lastly, thank you to the external committee for really embracing our Human Relations Commission. I was so blown away when we sat in the committee, in the appointments committee, and heard about all of the other municipalities who tap into our Human Relations Commission to be able to use them as as subject matter experts. So thank you to the external committee for taking that recommendation and and running with that. Um and and that's really all I have, so thanks, take, thank you to the three of those entities.
Councilmember Waddell, I do want to just say that um the Zoom is still available, that you referred to, as you, you know, you said you still watch it, but uh residents can watch that Zoom.
Oh, I've been sharing it.
So, thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Kinston?
Mayor, I actually forgot what my statement was, so.
Too young for that.
I'll pass, thank you.
All right. Uh Councilmember Hair?
Thanks, Mayor. Um for at a number of me-
For, at a number of meetings, I have echoed that we give the citizens an opportunity to hear what we have been doing that was birthed out of just the civil unrest across our country. And so, thanks for tonight. At least citizens have an opportunity. I always thought that citizens need to have an opportunity to hear that we were doing something, that we were hearing, hearing their voices and their complaints and their concerns. And thanks, Mayor, for putting together the internal and external committees. So thanks for what we're doing, but we're not done, but thanks for all that we've heard tonight for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kinston remembered her question, I guess?
Thank you, Mayor. I do apologize. One of the questions that I had was regarding the ETC survey that's going to be done. One of the questions was, do we know if that's going to be by paper or by email concerning how the pool is done? You know, if it's done by paper, you know, how many people are going to be getting it? What the pool's going to look like? And then also with concern with email, all citizens don't have access to email and being able to get a good pool of responses. And then also just making sure, I know there was a question about vetting, with this company doing it, making sure that the ones that are responding back, which I'm sure will be selected, would, that they are citizens of Fayetteville.
Yes, ma'am, that has been one of our major concerns with the Zoom as well, but certainly we will make sure of that when we talk to them about how they want to set this up. Because we have the ability to post it online and just have people click through and submit on our website, and we have the ability to email it, we'll have the ability to print out surveys, just depends on how much money, how much, you know, they can do anything we pay for, so.
Okay, thank you.
Most certainly.
Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Wright Lanier. So, two points. I owe, it's a lot of thank-yous going around tonight, so I think I owe Councilmember Dawkins a thank you for making an ask that I've been beating a drum very heavily on in these, in our committee, which is really making sure we get to our community and have these conversations. And I'm thankful that he's recognized that this will be very emotional conversation and very heavy conversations. And I would like to point out, when we look around this country and this world, we look at people wanting truth and transparency, and whether it's ugly or harsh or uncomfortable, they want it. And so, when we start to get into these communities and have these meetings, we have to keep that at the forefront. These citizens know how to act amongst each other. We are very fortunate. We didn't really experience protesting with the outcome of the election, so I'm hopeful that once we start these, these community meetings, that, and I'm also asking each council member, get in these community meetings as well, and really dialogue with these people who have something to give. One other thing that I wanted to point out was, I didn't hear it stated from the chairman or yourself, one of the things that we said that we were going to focus on was if our city was, we wanted to look at how we were dispersing our resources, and if there were any biases pertaining, related to that. And I didn't see it anywhere in here, and we also talked about how that could potentially relate to poverty. So I just wanted to point that out for the listening audience and this council and yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingram. To that point, I mean, I think that during our last committee meeting, I've asked staff to look at it. The city of Fayetteville is a 250, $60 million operation annually that has resources, and so it's fair to ask if the same amenities are spread evenly throughout our community, that parts of the community that seem to be neglected receive the same investment from the city dollars, from the public dollars, which lead to housing prices, which values, which lead to wealth. And so, at the end of the day, making sure that we are taking the citizens' dollars and we're being equitable and fair with it, I think was a part of the external committee's task, and I think that I'm glad you reminded of that. Also, too, before I go to council, and I'll check in with the manager before I go to Councilmember Waddell, and I think we would have covered everybody. All of us, I think, have, play a very important role in solving the problems of the community. And I say that every day, that I think because of that, because our willingness to engage, give our different ideas and perspectives, we've served, we fared very well compared to a number of places. I talk to a lot of mayors who are pulling their hair out these days, here, I don't have any, thank God, but a lot of council members and people in position are really struggling with some problems that thankfully has not made its way to Fayetteville, and I think it's because all of us and our relationships, our willingness to talk and communicate, whether it's Ville's Voices, Fayette PAC, whomever it is, we're saying that citizens are welcome to come to the table, let's have a tough discussion, but let's at least have a discussion. And Councilman Dawkins, I appreciate the references about the market house, because I know that is a tough, tough conversation. You know, we could have very easily done what a lot of our previous predecessors did, which was punt this issue until the next issue comes up. But we didn't do what was politically comfortable, and it will not be a comfortable conversation, but at least we are willing to have the conversation before any decisions are made. So thank you, council, thank you, staff. I'll go to, ask the manager real quick, is there, this was just a check-in from my understanding, this was not the official report, is that right?
We would like some direction and action on the recommendations.
Okay, so we'll go to that, I'll go to Councilmember Waddell real quick, and then clear the board, and then we'll move on, council. We just have a public four-man hearing tonight. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you so much. So, my question is, and you teed it up perfectly for me, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are going to have these discussions. I'm certain that this council will agree to, that these discussions are important. What is to come of the discussion? So, once there is a community consensus, whatever that consensus may be, has the council decided what we're going to do with that information? Was that a discussion in the external committee?
I could probably answer that a little bit, because the goal was, and I think this came up, I'm glad you brought that up, there were two parts, the way I saw this. One was to find the information out and to do the process, and then in December, when the committees report, implementation, if whatever direction this board chooses to do, or whatever we choose to do with the information that we've had, from the discussions to the surveys, to whatever, I think will be a council decision how we move it forward. But I think the committees were never focused on coming in with the action plan, we wanted to leave that to the body. But they were able to spend two, three hours together, you know, two times a month, that we just didn't have to drill down to get to that answer, I guess.
Okay, and I can appreciate that. So I guess, in, kind of in keeping with it, I'm just trying to think through it, because to hire a consultant, bring in a consultant, have a consultant come and engage in the community, have the Human Relations Commission engage with the community, ask the community how they feel about the structure of the market house and what they would like to see happen with the structure of the market house, and then that information be brought back to us, I think that it would be very helpful for the external committee to engage in a dialogue amongst themselves, to be able to bring back to the council some concepts of what it looks like, what we will do with that information. Because one of the things, when I first ran for office, I always said, we do a whole lot of planning, strategic planning, but no strategic doing. And so, you know, and I've seen that we've done more strategic doing as a result of kind of that intentionality of what are we going to do with this information? But I would hate to see us get our citizens involved in a conversation, bring us back their voice and their perspective, and then us not have a plan on how we wish to proceed forward with that. And to close, one of the things that I think we ought to all be well-cautioned of is understanding how far we may or may not be willing to go, because if we overwhelmingly get information back from the community that says one thing or another, are we prepared to back our community? So I think, you know, being very intentional and deliberate as a body to understand, when we go out and we have this dialogue and we begin this conversation, the information may or may not come back to support our own personal perspective, or the perspective of how we feel, think, or believe we should move forward as a city. And we need to be prepared to face the eventuality that we might have some very tough decisions to make, and if we don't, we could leave every citizen that participated in this dialogue feeling disenfranchised and ignored, if that's the course of action that we take. So I just want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful and deliberate about how we're going to handle this information when it comes back to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I will say, in my opinion, I think that a decision as important, as impactful as something like the market house needs to fall squarely on the shoulders of the 10 of us, and not a committee. I mean, I think the committee is there for research purposes, but this body should decide what decisions they make and what direction they go in. And I think when we laid out the overall outline of this process, it was never to come back to say that four council members would make a decision for 215,000, 20,000 people. It's even tough for 10 people to make a decision that will impact people for generations, potentially. So I think that we're going to have to just man up, or woman up, however you want to say it, and take a decision and take this information, and be clear with the public what happens next. That's squarely on our shoulders as to what to do. But I'll go to Councilmember Wright, and then I will look to you for some action to receive these recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want the record to reflect, in our last external meeting, we discussed resources and how they will be distributed among our citizens, big, small businesses, and things of that nature. We had an elaborate conversation on that in our last Zoom meeting. And so, we were talking about that, and to get that information back, to see how that is distributed, you know, equitably. And that's something that didn't appear on the presentation tonight, but I'm sure that Assistant City Manager is working on that and get that information back to us on that. I also wanted to say that the conversation on the market house and that we've heard here tonight is going to be a very passionate conversation on both sides. And given the tensions in our community, and maybe, thank God, not so much as Fayetteville, intercity, but around the country, dealing with race relations, you know, the statues and every other thing that we've been dealing with in our society up to now, I just want to thank the mayor for having enough vision to put this out front and have a candid conversation on both sides. And so, what the staff is doing that you can't see behind the scenes, that we have discussed in length about the conversation in the, in the town hall meetings or the community meetings, they may get intense, they're going to be passionate, and we were very, very careful in that we wanted to make sure we had an organization like the Human Relations Department, that are experts, Dr. Wade and others, to be able to be the group, to be able to handle these conversations without them getting blowed out of proportion. And at the end of the day, we'll have enough information based upon the surveys and these community conversations to know what decisions we have to make. And I agree with the mayor that these are going to be tough decisions, especially the future of the market house. And we wanted someone that was neutral to be able to handle these town hall meetings one way or another. So, Dr. Wade, can you elaborate on that a little bit more, so the council and those that are listening could understand the sensitivity in that you are aware, having done these type of things before, how that's going to look?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor of the town, Chairman Wright, for those words. Thanks to Councilmember Waddell for her articulated faith in the commission, which has also been shared by many council members. First and foremost, I wanted to state that, to your point, the Human Relations Commission has always been about bringing people together in the middle to see how we can best solve the issues that face our community. The commission actually had its retreat this past Saturday over at Kiwanis Recreation Center, and on behalf of Chairman Eric Olson of the commission, as well as the full commission, they were briefed on the possible assignment of this particular tasking. They have accepted it eagerly, they're looking forward to being engaged as their ordinance empowers it to be at the direction of council. On that commission, you have, in addition to Chairman Olson, you also have several other individuals who are professionally trained as facilitators, to include Chairman Olson, I referenced him earlier. He formerly was the Military Equal Opportunity Director for Fort Bragg. We also have Millet Harris, Council Commissioner Millet Harris, who's the Equal Opportunity Director for Pope Army Airfield. We have several other individuals who are trained through a special institute, the Defense Equal Opportunity Management Institute. And so, there is a wealth of experience, applied experience, that they bring to the table. We're looking forward to that. We're looking forward to also consulting with others, individuals who can provide additional perspectives on how to best proceed down this path. And at the end of the day, it's all about the importance of what you highlighted, to take something that can be an emotional discussion, which we need. We need to have those types, some honest, frank discussions, but in a safe environment that allows each person's opinion to be valued. And we'd like to have it, it has always been in the commission's history, to do it face-to-face. COVID has prevented us from norm, from our traditional methodologies and strategies, however, we're not going to let that stand in our way. We will leverage the technology to move forward with it. As the commission, I say "we," but the reality is, it is them, the board that you have empowered. I, as staff, am charged with supporting their efforts, and they are ready to take on this particular task, because they know their work is in support of your objectives, which is to ensure that the quality of life for every resident in our community, regardless of race, national origin, ethnicity, religion, orientation, identity, et cetera, is second to none.
Thank you, sir.
Making that way, Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir, that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. And so, council, we will separate, I guess, two recommendations. I saw Councilman Davis had text. Councilman Davis, did you have a motion for this particular recommendation for the internal part of this? Councilman Davis, your audio on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I'm just getting back into the house. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommended actions within the CAM, one being initiated mandatory inherent in unconscious bias training for city council and all or portion of the workforce, second being review and evade without peer jurisdictions on their efforts to increase local and minority business participation in procurement processes, and third, continue our dialogue regarding the city's council, city council's interest in establishing the police citizens board. It is my hope that council will accept this recommended action, this motion, that I can get a second, and we can vote to move these actions forward.
Yeah, I think we, seconded by lights, I think Councilmember Kinston was the first light I saw. Was that for that purpose? Okay, all right. All right, so there's a motion by Councilman Davis to accept a recommendation, there's a second by Councilmember Kinston. If there are no discussion, council, I'll look to you for your votes on that one, internal.
Green, sir.
All right, Adam Clark, that is unanimous. Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to accept the external committee, two recommendations, and we're going to add a third recommendation to that. Number one, allow staff to pursue the contract with ETC Institute located in Kansas to conduct a survey to serve as a baseline for community discussion related to race relations and the future of the market house. Number two, external committee would also like to recommend that the Human Relations Commission be tasked with facilitating a series of virtual town halls due to the COVID-19. There will be Zoom meetings to discuss the result of the survey. And number three, Mr. Mayor, would be also... And number three, Mr. Mayor, would be also to deal with the dispute, distribution of resources from the city to agencies, small businesses, and our residents to ensure that the resources in our city are equitably distributed.
To the last part again?
The last part is to ensure, to do the research, to bring that research back to the council as far as resources being distributed throughout the city.
So on that one, if you didn't mind, it's your motion, but I was just recommending. The research part of that, I guess y'all could probably tackle in the committee setting because it's not ready for a recommendation.
And we could come back to it.
Right, yeah. So you want to kind of rephrase that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just to, for number three, for resource distribution, we can give that to the staff, recommend giving that to staff for research to bring that back to the council at a later date.
So y'all will do that, handle that in the committee. So take it, if you agree with that, and just take it out of that motion and name those first two items.
Yes, sir. So we'll scratch number three and proceed with one and two as read.
All right. So there's a motion by Councilmember Wright. I think there's a second by Councilmember Dawkins to accept the external committee's recommendations as presented tonight, excluding the item that...
Excuse me, I had an amendment.
Yeah, okay. Let me get the motion out, and then I'll come to you. So to accept the as recommended. So discussion on the motion, I saw Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, and Councilmember Waddell, I think, was next. Yeah, I've got, it's Christmas up here, buddy. Yeah, that was the preface. Yeah, Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two questions. I know it wasn't mentioned as far as the cost for the survey, as well as the timeframe. I know at the last meeting, we discussed sixty days.
Staff?
Yeah, because I didn't see it in the report.
Ma'am, I do not remember discussing sixty days. We have not reached out to ETC to get a price yet. But we can, that was just my estimate. So once we have that information, we'll come back to the committee and, you know, lay out the schedule, lay out the parameters of what they're offering, or what we're proposing that they will do.
Okay, so then what are we voting on?
So we're voting to be able to procure, to allow us to, you know, to talk to them.
Reach out to talk to them without having a number as far as how much it's gonna cost?
We will come back to the number, with a number.
Okay.
I have an estimate of what some other, you know, communities do, but they scoped it differently. You know, they may have done, you know, the Cadillac version, you know. So it just depends on what we ask them to do for us.
Okay, well, for that reason, I'm not gonna be in a support for that. And also, the last meeting, it was mentioned that, I want to say it was sixty days, we were gonna reach out to someone to do the survey, then it was gonna be posted. The survey was gonna be posted for at least thirty days, giving citizens the opportunity to respond.
That was my estimate, yes, ma'am, that we could do thirty days, yes.
Okay, so what's the next process?
So we will talk...
As far as if council go ahead and vote today?
So we'll pick up the phone and, you know, we'll talk to ETC to make sure of what the steps are. We'll bring those back. Say, for instance, you know, we want online, we want mailers, you know, we have to tell them. So it's kind of like building a menu. You know, we'll find out, you know, what their menu has, and we can pick off what we want. We'll bring that to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question had something more to do with the third point that was being added on. Since it's been removed, though, I don't know that it necessarily has to be answered tonight, but I still do want to make sure it's kind of tossed out there. When we talk about the city's resources being invested equitably across the city, what resources are we specifically speaking to? Are we talking about investment in infrastructure? Are we talking about investment in, like, what resources are we speaking to?
The thought process that I mentioned when we brought it up, certainly, infrastructure or specific part of that is street paving. For instance, I know a few years ago, they had broken down street paving by districts, you know.
Perfect. That's all that, yeah.
It was mentioned that, you know, where Van Story Hills, for instance, did it receive the same investment or city paving cycle as Broad Hill, you know? And it was pointed out, you know, a few different things like that, sidewalks or beautification efforts and so forth. So things that add to the value of the property.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually was, two parts. I was gonna add a friendly amendment to the motion, but are you gonna, you want me to say it? I was gonna ask that Councilmember Dawkins, in his second, add a friendly amendment to support his in-person meetings that he requested and staff agreed to. And secondly, when we talk about these surveys, and I will say, I don't, I personally feel thirty days is too short of a time. That's just me personally. Maybe we can talk about that in our committee, but that's too short of a time for this type of discussion. Secondly, when we talk about this survey, businesses is always at the forefront. We gotta really be focused on our citizens who live here day in, day out. And I do know that we have a lot of small businesses that live here, but I just really want us to tune in and make sure we are focusing on our citizens. And I'm not saying that we are not. I am just personally putting this out there for my own, just to make sure I can get that off my chest. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Ingram, just to kind of clear this up, so that it's not confusing. This vote, this recommendation accepts or not the recommendation, as mentioned, to reach out to the company, to ask and give them the scope of what our needs are for here, to say, based on what we've told you, what we want to do, how much are your services, how long will it take? So some of those detailed questions, you can't get by just speculating that I want to use company B without talking to them. So the committee's recommendation today, the vote is today, if you believe or support us reaching out to that company to find all those details out. And then they will bring that back to the committee. The committee will then share that with council before any action is taken. So that then, if it's too much, or if it's too little, or if it's not what the council chooses that we do, or the way that the process that you've described, then we have an option to do that. So we want to separate those two things. Tonight is for, do you believe that a third party should be engaged to help us with this?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, Ms. Council Lady Ingram made a...
Friendly amendment that you all...
Which I accept as a second, but for in-person meetings, but...
Okay. Let me try to...
This pertaining to committee meetings?
Let me try to understand, basically, the in-person meetings to discuss the future of the Market House. And I'm sure that is that what...
And race relations.
And race relations. So I think that we can do that in small groups, and I don't have a problem with that, you know. But we're gonna give that to the staff, that they can come back to us with a schedule, with what that might look like. Because I think in-person conversations are good and would be needed as well. But we won't be able to reach as many citizens. But for those that could come, we'll look at the numbers and what we can do with the, being in conjunction with the virus, being safe. And I don't have a problem with that.
So just to be clear, this amendment was to include in-person meetings when the community discussions start happening, as long as they can be done in a safe socially-distanced way?
Correct, Mayor. Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Is that something that's accepted by councilman? I see you saying it, right, about that? Well, we're discussing now, but it's on you.
Go ahead and discuss, sir.
It's on you. Councilman Dawkins?
One of the concerns I have, I want to make sure I'm clear, and it's probably to Ms. Angel Wright-Leneer. I want to make sure I understand what this vote is going to do. It's not going to give the Alatha, Kansas, ETC company-specific questions. You're gonna have to kind of create what this project is gonna look like. Because, for instance, you know, I want to make sure, you know, how we handle the, you know, what the questions are gonna be. I mean, is that gonna come back to the entire council? Is it gonna come to Chairman Wright's external committee he chairs? I want to understand that. And then my second part of my question, probably to Dr. Wade. The county has appointees on the Human Relations Commission. So I don't mind getting their input, but I'm not interested in their vote. If they don't live in the city, I'm not interested in their vote. Because as Council Lady Ingram talked about, we've got thousands of people we want to get their input on. And I don't want us rushing in the next sixty days because the Wuhan COVID may not be done yet. We may not have a vaccine that all of us can get, just because there's gonna need to be a couple hundred million vaccine dosages. So those are the two questions I had. How do we handle the county members of the Human Relations Commission? And then what are we gonna do? This is just starting the conversation with the Alatha, Kansas. And then because I want to see our city hall filled up one day. I want to see Kiwanis, I want to see Smith, I want to see, one of these days, a Mabel Smith rec. Don't we have a Mabels? All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Can you answer those questions?
I can answer.
And that's a great point, that I did receive a couple emails or comments under the impression that whatever our actions tonight, we're actually sending, hey, ask these loaded questions and tell them these are the survey questions. You're not doing any of that. This is just, how do we do the process? How much does it cost? What does it include? Let me take this to council to approve, so.
This just authorizes us to be able to do the consulting with ETC, to tell them what our issues are, for them to build a program out for us, you know, based on their years of experience and working with other cities. So we'll tell them what our issues are, what we're thinking we want, and we'll come back to the committee to present that. And we sit down with them as well, you know, once they give us that information. Then we sit down with them, and we, you know, they can help us with questions, and, you know, we'll present that all to the committee. And I'll let Dr., I'm sorry.
To the whole council before any decisions are being made.
Yes, sir. And I'll let Dr. Wade speak to the county questions, sir.
To your point, sir, the commission, when it met at its retreat, it is true that it's made up of county and city residents, as well as members from Fort Bragg. Bottom line was, they were all unanimous. They want to move forward, they want to support what the council has directed. There was no adversarial perspective. They were all on the same sheet of music.
Mr. Mayor, what I was more concerned about is, I didn't know if the Human Relations Commission was gonna make a recommendation. I mean, y'all are gonna do tons of work and study, but I wasn't really interested in a recommendation. But if you're gonna make a recommendation, then I just need to know that. And I'm not interested in the county residents' perspective. They can sure give us their perspective. I shouldn't say I'm not interested. I'm interested in what they have to say. But when it comes to the actual vote of what the recommendation is to the council, I just want to make sure they're paying city taxes.
I understand your perspective, sir.
Remember that criteria now. Sir, remember that criteria.
I will say that, right now, it is my understanding that tasking of the commission is to receive feedback and to provide that feedback for, after it's been shared with city management, for the deliberation of council as to what's going on, whether it be that particular subject. And while the Market House is a component, you've also tasked the commission with doing race relations work as well. And that work will be going on, not only just for this particular project, but long after this work is done. They'll continue to do that work.
Our council, we've had a very robust discussion session. There's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Wright. It was seconded by Councilmember Dawkins, an amended motion to include the small group in-person option as recommended by Councilmember Ingram. Time to vote. Council, I'll look to you for your votes for a minute.
Thank you, council.
Councilman Davis?
Green, sir.
All right. Adam Clark, that's unanimous. By those two? Oh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? No, ma'am. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you, council. Good work. Council, we have Public Forum next. Maybe we can take just a few-minute break and push through. We have, how many speakers tonight? Ten. So give us a ten-minute break, might need it, and we'll be right back. All right, council, we will, council, if we can, we'll call our meeting back to order. Now we're at eight point zero, the public forum. This is a time of Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be given limited ti, limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, I ask that you please reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when your name is called, uh, when you're, you're acknowledged on the phone, we ask that you please state, state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light that's located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the red light appears, that means your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. We have 10 people signed up for the forum this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Mr. Walls, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Please state your name and your, your address.
Uh, Rob Walls, 1436 Valencia Drive.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, city managers, departments, fellow Americans. I was going to discuss North Carolina statute 132, its misuse and overuse by city management and police department management, but that has to be tabled. Your briefing has highlighted other critical issues. For reference, majority of police officers in this city are moral, ethical Americans that wear a badge that have pledged to protect other residents. The police chief is a moral, ethical American that has pledged to uphold law. I don't know how that has got misconstrued throughout the current social movement events. The Fayetteville Police Department historically has had a low rate of police issues and police violence. That has gotten thrown under the bus as if the FPD has critical issues. Their management policies need to be changed, but the individuals in the Fayetteville Police Department are ethical Americans that are trying to protect other Americans in this When it comes to issues such as mental health for veterans, there are recent examples that illustrate that, that things are horrible for veterans. You're likely to get shot by the Cumberland County Police Department. That needs to be looked at. When it comes to the video, video is not used properly in this city. Ordinances are horrible. The halfway house right now is defined as anything that you want it to be. For instance, the city is using the lack of a definition of a halfway house to allow a prison to be built in the heart of the city. That prison is next to three residential areas. Those residential areas have dozens of Americans. And as we're right around the corner from the 11th hour of the 11th day, 11th month, and I guess it depends if history matters, you are causing undue hardship on veterans. And if you're talking about brag and being co-mingled with brag, then this is not a version of all-American that this city should uphold. It doesn't take long to change the definition for a halfway house. So you can't have 100-plus bed facility with barbed wire armed guards in the heart of the city. Mr. Mayor, I will relinquish rest of my time, so hopefully in your version of all-American, you can respond to some of them.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Michael Pinkston.
Good evening, Mr. Pinkston, can you hear us? Mr. Pinkston, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address for us.
Michael Pinkston, 7019 Calamar Drive. Mr. Mayor, many prominent people over time have visited or taken part in special celebrations at the Market House. Listed below are just a few examples. In 1842, Governor John M. Morehead addressed the citizens of Fayetteville from the Market House. In 1857, a ceremony to welcome was held at the Market House for native Fayettevillian, the Honorable James C. Dobbin, who had completed four years of service as the Secretary of Navy under the cabinet of President Franklin Price. In 1889, the famous Marine Corps band, John Philip Sousa, played to a large crowd in the Market House in celebration of the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the U.S. Constitution. In December of 1919, General John J. Pershing, commanding general, American Expeditionary Force during World War I, addressed the citizens of Fayetteville from the balcony of the Market House. In 1931, Amelia Earhart was escorted through the Market House on her way to Fayetteville. In 1939, NC Governor Clyde R. Ho addressed the citizens of Fayetteville in celebration of Scottish settlements held in April 19 through 25 in 1939. In 1941, President Franklin D. Roosevelt visited and viewed the Market House. During World War II, the First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt viewed the Market House. In 1947, General Dwight D. Eisenhower visited the Market House. In 1960, Terry Sanford announced his candidacy for governor from the west balcony of the Market House. In 1983, Count Renee, descendant of the Marquis de Lafayette, viewed the Market House while riding in the Lafayette carriage. Mr. Mayor, historical designations of the Market House include in 1990, in 1937, the Market House was listed in the Historical American Building Survey conducted by the federal government. 1961, the Market House was named as a building of major historic. In 1970, the Market House was nominated for inclusion in the National Register of Historical Places. In 1974, the U.S. Department of Enmark. In 1980, of the Market Square National Register. In 1986, the Market House was district as a geographical, historical, and architectural focus. In 1999, the Market House was listed in Fayetteville Downtown National Register District as a symbol of the center of the town. Mr. Mayor, you can save our Market House. Save our Market House. The evidence is overwhelming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Mary Harris.
Ms. Harris, can you hear us? Ms. Harris?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Can you turn your television down a little bit?
No, that's not the television. Can you, is it okay now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and fellow council members.
Please, please state your, Ms. Harris, can you state, Ms. Harris, can you state your name and address for us, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary L. Harris, 1044 Creighton Circle. Mr. Mayor and council members, I come before you tonight regarding a code violation for property located at 1089 Trade Street. If I may go back to September 2019, I received a letter from Ms. Lindo regarding code violations to repair and paint a shed along with other items. I took care of the other items and repaired the shed. During this time, I contracted a virus and was placed in the hospital. Ms. Lindo contacted me and asked why the shed had not been painted. I explained that I had been in the hospital and needed additional time. She said that was okay because it was raining and the winter was coming in. So she said that she would close out the folder and in March 2020, she would send me another letter, re, uh, another letter and then, and everything, only thing that would be mentioned would be to paint the shed. In March, I never received a letter or a notice. In April, I received a letter assessing me $100 a day until the shed had been painted. The violation was completed. However, I immediately called that office and asked for the supervisor to return my call. He never did. I kept trying, so finally I was told that she did not have a supervisor. Everybody in the office were on the same level. Then I called, they asked me to call the DA's office. I called the DA's office and after hearing, I expressed that my evidence for had not been honored. And the assistant DA told me that she was the last person and no one could make a decision above hers. And if I did not like her decision, I could go hire me a lawyer and take the matter to court. I do not think that since Ms. Lindo did not follow the code of what she had promised, I should have been fined a $100 donation.
Ms. Harris, can you give me the address of the property that you just talked about again?
The property is at 1089 Trade Street in Fayetteville.
And you're saying trade, T-R-A-D-E?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll have someone call you about that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Carolyn Hamilton.
Ms. Hamilton, are you there?
Yes, I am, ma'am.
Hey, hey, how are you? Can you state your name and address for us?
My name is Carolyn Juliette Hamilton. My address is 363 Tucson, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28303. And thank you for having me this evening, city council and all the ones in their respective places. Um, I want to address an issue that's been, it's an ongoing issue that's at my residence and it's within Cumberland County Courthouse, addressing Dr. Anthony Ray as being the Human Relationship Manager for the community of Cumberland County, Fayetteville, North Carolina, and Fort Bragg. On the week of 7/6, and I addressed this in our last meeting, on the week of July the 6th, 2020, my car was vandalized twice in my garage. The first time my tires was slashed, and that was on July the 10th, and the second time on July the 14th, my tires were slashed, the windows was busted out, shot up, and my car was shot up. And as a result of that, it is a total loss and I, my quality of life, and I am being victimized in Cumberland County Courthouse. I am being victimized in my house. I am being bullied. I am being bullied because of the, the, they, they shot up my car, um, in my garage, they vandalized it, and they did it twice. And I, and, and I know that it's going to sound a little bit out there, but I have a refrigerator that is making noise, and this is my second refrigerator. that is making noise, and this is my second refrigerator. And as if is that my phone is sabotaged, and when I'm posting things, my refrigerator makes noise, and I, and I know that I am, I am targeted. I know that there's a bug that's within my phone and that's within this, some kind of way they sending signals to this refrigerator. And, and then, because Doc Anthony Wade is over the police officers, on that particular day, I did request, and I have sent several emails that's included Chief Tina B. Hawkins, um, and, uh, Mister DJ Hair, and, uh, Officer Ramirez, and, uh, uh, Strickland, in reference to this matter, that what is going on with, 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 within my life and within Cumberland County Courthouse and within Fayetteville, North Carolina, and my garage. And this is the quality of life of the resident. I believe that Doc Anthony Wade of Human Relations is speaking of. And I need, I need, if you see something wrong, say something. And also Chief Tina B. Hawkins, I do need to know that what the status is of the investigation. Is that, as I recall, you say, I think y'all meet, um, once a week to discuss these issues of the crimes. And then also you did say that you see, um, something on Facebook as complaints. And I need to know how do you address those complaints and do, how do you go about complaining on Facebook? And I also need some assistance because I'm not able to speak to, to the district attorney, um, that I am a victim on the case of Cumberland County Courthouse, Fayetteville, North Carolina. My rights are being violated. I am being victimized in Cumberland County, Fayetteville.
Thank you so much, Miss Harris.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mister Jonathan Seaman.
Mister Seaman, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir. Mister Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. If you can state your name and address for us.
Yes, sir. Jonathan Seaman, fifteen seventy Alabaster Way. And I would like to start off by stating a thank you to Mister Mayor and the council members for being present tonight and listening to our concerns. Uh, just a little introduction, I served pri- seven prior years for the City of Fayetteville Police Department as a patrol officer, a bicycle officer downtown, as well as an instructor and a search and rescue diver for the department. Uh, I would like you to look closely into the statistics that the chief of police has provided you this evening. Uh, she states that forty-five men, members of the department are short currently. I, I think her statistics are incorrect and she's looking closer to seventy plus, which puts our staffing level for the department and the citizens of Fayetteville at about seventy-five percent of the operating capacity. I want you to ask her questions such as what is she doing for the victims of over a hundred people that have died in the city limits in the last three years? Over a thousand homes have been shot into over the last three years. Over three hundred businesses have been burglarized this year. I want her to answer questions as well as ask those questions of her of why a hundred and sixty-plus firearms were stolen on the nights of the riots. Why we're not doing public information or live meetings of the comstat meetings to show you these statistics where they're happening so the, the citizens of Fayetteville have these answers and can know how to better protect themselves. I would love to have answers on the social media presence. Sixty reactions on Facebook is not a social media presence. When you have officers with over forty thousand followers, there's better answers. There's better members at the department that can answer those for her and can provide better leadership to the citizens of Fayetteville. I'd also like you guys to ask her why she asked for all the police department officers to respond to her location to look for her dog that was lost. That's a great question that the citizens of Fayetteville need answered when it's not provided to every other member that lives in this city. And also, it should be answered why the response time has increased over a minute and thirty seconds when lives matter. I'll table the remaining time for another speaker, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Miss Sandy Scarborough.
Hello, uh, what's her last name? Scarborough? Hi, Miss Scarborough, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name and your address for us?
Um, my name is Sandy Scarborough. My address is thirty-three thirty-six Rogers Drive. Um, I wanted to speak about the, uh, halfway house that's going to be built on Kane Road. Um, I think the city ordinance, which defines the term halfway house, needs to be revisited and revised. Uh, many of my neighbors were duped into believing this halfway house would be a small, um, housing of a handful of residents. Not, it's fourteen thousand square feet with imposing gates for all those non-violent residents that are there. And over one hundred felons will be housed there. Um, I've looked into the recidivism rate of these felons and it's seventy to eighty percent. So where are they gonna go when they get out? The easiest targets will be right in their backyards. There's even a school bus stop directly across the street from the proposed facility. I believe my neighborhood is being discriminated against because we have a high number of elderly residents. Uh, we also have a lot of blue collar workers. Um, this is not a wealthy neighborhood. And I wonder how the residents' advanced story would feel about having a building full of felons in their backyard. I've lived here for twenty-five years. I bought my house on my teacher's salary. I'm prepared to retire. My elderly mother lives a block away from me. The radio station, which is an open field, is the only buffer between her and a house full of criminals. I live with my eighteen-year-old autistic daughter. Uh, she's been known to elope, which means autistic speak for runaway. One time she ran away at three AM in the morning and went into someone's house. It was directly across from the spot on Kane Road. Um, if these had not been nice people, the situation, the scenario would have been very different. They were nice people. They called the police. I went to pick her up. It's directly across from where that facility is going to be built. My father was a veteran of World War Two, Three, and Vietnam. Um, he left us in a place where he thought we'd be safe. We are not safe. I think the reason, um, I think the responsibility of keeping constituents safe is on council. And this prison built in our neighborhood on Kane Road is just not right. There are many other places, uh, like twenty-ten Merkison Road, perhaps, somewhere near there, but not in my backyard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Miss Dawn Atkins Hurley.
Um, before we, uh, before we move to that, Madam Attorney, did you see the question, uh, just for, uh,
Hello?
Our, our, uh, give us one second, Miss Hurley, if you don't mind. Where, the halfway house is not in the council's purview. That's it, the appellate court, or do you know the latest on that?
That is correct. Uh, there is an appeal pending at the Court of Appeals. As of right now, I'm not aware of any plans to build a, uh, any type of facility at that location.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. Yes, ma'am. Um, what's her, who do we have?
Mayor, our next speaker is Miss Dawn Atkins Hurley.
Uh, Miss Hurley, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, can you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, this is Dawn Atkins Hurley, and I'm the chair of the Support the Market House Board. And I have two items to discuss this evening. The first one is the future of the Market House, and the second is the city council operating behind closed doors. The first item is how to get an unbiased consensus concerning the Market House. Some of the ideas that have been put forth tonight and at other, uh, meetings that I've talked, I've been to are using Zoom for discussions, town hall meetings, both large and small, and to hire a firm to take a survey. Uh, the Zoom meetings, uh, really won't work in a large format uh, because of, uh, the limited discussion ability. And it limits participation only to folks with internet and technical abilities. Um, the large-scale town hall meetings will be difficult to conform to social distancing. It'll be difficult to control discussions and gather data, and it'll be very chaotic without a very strong moderator. If you hire a firm to do the survey, that will be very expensive. Who decides which groups to target and how are they gonna be contacted? And this thirty-day timeframe is just a little bit ridiculously short. Uh, also, it may not be an accurate representation because you go back to people having to fill out things online, and not everybody is, is technologically savvy. I'm not. I know I'm not. So we get to the small-scale town hall meetings. I think this is probably one of the best solutions to get the best input. It can conform to dis- to social distancing. It'll be easier to gather data. It'll be easier to moderate. You can have smaller groups of ten to twenty people, but you've got to make sure that the groups are diverse. And then they can submit recommendations to the council. The second item is that the council is still operating behind closed doors. And it's taking advantage of the pandemic, making important decisions, lacking transparency in plans and actions you are taking, often ignoring laws and regulations set in place to protect the city, the citizens, and our businesses. The current lawsuit against the city concerning the installations of the cell towers is an excellent example. Also, the renovation of historic downtown buildings without conforming to historic standards while eliminating the kid committee that was responsible for the oversight of the renovations. I could cite many more examples, but I'll leave that for another time. This city council needs to open the doors to the council chambers, allow your citizens to be part of the government. You are elected officials representing citizens of Cumberland County. You're here to operate in the city, the citizens', and the business's best interest. Please allow, uh, please do this. And if the members of the city council continue to operate behind closed.
Thank you, ma'am. And, uh, just for, uh, just before you call the next speaker, um, just for clarification to those who are, are listening, uh, the committee did not recommend anything to the exclusion of the other. I think from what I heard tonight, it was a combination of all of those things that were mentioned, whether it's surveys, small group meetings, town halls, virtual, uh, just so that you can get as much input from as many people as possible, understanding that it's a difficult and unusual time, and, and everyone is not at the same, doesn't have the same capabilities, uh, as we see. Um, you know, with, with going online virtually. So I think the council is certainly open to all of that, and I thank her for those comments.
Mayor, our next speaker is Miss Rebecca Hankin.
Uh, no.
Not available. Our next speaker is Iman Iranami Mohammed Smith. Not available. Our final speaker is Mister David Wilks.
Uh, Mister Wilks, can you hear us? Mister Wilks, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. If you can just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is David Wilks. I'm from five zero three eight Linton Hall Road. Um, I'm gonna talk about the event committee. And I just want to say right up front, I have no financial interest in this. All of my activities are, uh, volunteer. But I'm here to point out some concerns over the city event committee and their denial to allow event coordinators and directors to have fundraising events for local charities that help abused children, victims of rape, uh, those without health care, the homeless and hungry. For the last few weeks, there have been mega events at Segra Stadium. The one that I personally observed was the trick-or-treat one, just a few days prior to the annual trick-or-treat that normally occurs downtown. A notice was sent out saying that it was council, but it was being replaced by the Segra. This was blamed on COVID-nineteen. The alert stated that this was done to reduce the spread of the disease for a few, but there's some, there's some issues I have with that. Hopefully y'all don't hurt this train. Even though there may have been some social distancing inside the stadium, the line to get into the stadium stretched several blocks down the street from Hay Street to Ray Street. So there was a, a line all the way around the block with no social distancing. There may have been some inside, but there was not anything outside. The usual event was always free and was hosted by small businesses all up and down Hay Street and Person Street, whereas the Segra event was three dollars and it was all condensed into one facility, whereas the usual one was spread out across downtown. So there was no big crowds and, and, and it's more dense in the Segra. There seems to also be a conflict of interest here since the city is the one who decides who gets permits. And also a Segra person sits on the permit committee, yet the city has financial interest in Segra. So they're allowed to have, have events and nobody else is. And finally, why are nonprofits not even given a chance to present a plan to have safe events? For example, I do five Ks. Five Ks, you can have, you do not have to start everybody all at one rushed-up time. You can actually have people uh, separated, and as they go across the start line, that's when their, their, uh, time starts. But this is, uh, greatly hurting those non- nonprofits because, you know, they're missing out on hundreds of thousands of dollars because they aren't allowed to have these events. And I know that they said something about the governor has, uh, restrictions on mass events, but that Segra one was thousands of people for about two or three hours. And what I, all the ones around here are way less than a thousand people. I would hope that you can at least give them a chance to present a plan, you know, for safety.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Uh, we have no further speakers.
All right, so we will close the public forum. At this time, we'll go to the public hearing. Uh, individuals desiring to speak at the night's public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue, uh, of the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement. Single spokesperson is designated, and in which case that spokesperson may utilize the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, uh, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, it means you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, uh, the timer will ring, or you will be notified the time is up. So at this time, I'll turn over to Mister Brown.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, Jennifer, can my presentation available to come up? So, can I just do it here? I think I see it. Here it is here. Okay, thank you. Th- this presentation is for construction area twenty of Phase Five. Uh, this is in Council District Six. It's Hackney Hills, um, Lake Point, and, um, I forget the other place, sorry. But it's, it's in District Six. And I, um, normally, as you know, when I have these presentations, we meet with the citizens who are here to speak at the public hearing in the Lafayette Room after the meeting. And of course, we can't do that with the, with the current situation. So I just want to make sure that the citizens at home have my contact information. Uh, my cell, my cellphone is nine one zero three nine one eight two zero nine. And my email address is mark.brown@faypwc.com. So if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me at either one of those things, and I can answer any questions they have. This tells you construction area twenty. You can see that. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what has happened so far to date, what the, what the schedule is, what the costs of the property owners are, and what financing options are available. So in February, we mailed survey appraisal notifications and letters to property owners in February seventeen. In August, the council adopted the preliminary assessment resolution, and we sent copies of the resolution to the property owners. We advertised for construction bids in January twenty eighteen, and construction was completed in July of twenty twenty. Um, in October twelfth, we submitted to the council a preliminary assessment rule. Um, and we're gonna ask you to confirm the assessments, uh, at your next regular meeting on November twenty-third. For a typical single-family residential lot, and every, every parcel in this area is a single-family residential lot. So, uh, it would be a five thousand dollar assessment, um, and we know the language for non-residential, but it's inapplicable to this section. These are all single-family residential. And the interest rate as set by city council policy is five point two five percent. Um, and city economic and community development staff are available to discuss financial assistance for property owners. Uh, payment options, um, property owners can prepay. They can pay in, in full with no interest within thirty days of the notice that goes out after council confirms the assessment. Uh, by state law, they can finance for a term of up to ten years at the interest rate set by council at five point two five percent. And they can pay in annual or monthly installments. Um, there's no pre, there's no penalty for. Um, there's no pre, there's no penalty for prepayment. So if you sign up for a monthly installment, and you have a little extra money, you can pay. You don't have to do that. You get, pay less interest that way, but there's no penalty for prepayment. And with that, I'm available if you have any questions, and I'll, um, wait to see if anybody else has questions that you want me to answer to.
Thank you so much, Mister Brown. Uh, we'll catch him at the end of the, uh, public hearing. So with that, we'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Uh, we have two people signed up for the public hearing. The first one is Miss Beverly McCullum.
Uh, what's her last name? McCullum?
McCullum. She's not available.
She's not avail, okay, all right.
Okay, sir. Our next speaker is Mister Edgar Martinez. Then we have no further speakers, sir.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions for Mister Brown, or can we entertain a motion at this time? Uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Mister Brown, could, could you go, could you go back to that previous slide for me, please?
Sure. Which, which one, the?
Fifty-eight per month on ten years. That, oh, no, no, the next, the one you just came from.
Before this, right there? The other way, okay.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you. That defaults my question. I just wanted to make sure I saw what I saw.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks. All right. Any other questions for Mister Brown? All right, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Mister Mayor, um, am I correct, you're looking for a motion to a.
Uh, yes, no, you don't need anything, Mister Brown. It's just a public hearing.
No, not tonight. This is the public hearing, Councilmember Dawkins. Uh, we will submit to the council for your next regular meeting the cam that, asking for you to confirm the assessment and the interest rate. So not tonight, you don't need a motion for tonight. So thanks for asking.
All right. Okay, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your information. Uh, yeah, that's the motion I'm looking for. All right.
I thought you were looking for a motion.